That is discussed in executive session. As a reminder for folk, we already called the meeting to order and just for folk that weren't here, Sammy is attending virtually and Judah is excused this evening. And as you can see, the rest of us are here in person. So as pertaining to the matters discussed in executive session, does anyone wish to make a motion?
I will.
Okay.
I vote that the board not hold a hearing on this matter that was discussed earlier today.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Chris and seconded by Bernie. Is there, is there any further discussion? Okay, with no further discussion, it's been moved by Chris and seconded by Bernie to, can you repeat it because I don't have it written down?
That the board not hold a hearing on this matter.
Okay, that the board not hold a hearing on this matter. Chris?
Aye.
Shawna?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
And I vote aye, a motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is acknowledgement of Arab American History Month. And we're gonna take turns reading that now.
Acknowledgement of the Arab American Heritage Month. Whereas the Corvallis School District recognizes and pays tribute to the significant contributions made in our community by Arab Americans, which includes people with ancestry from North Africa to the Persian Gulf and...
Whereas the Corvallis School District affirms that students, families, staff, and community members should be valued for all aspects of their identities and whereas Arab American Heritage Month grew out of a local effort in several school districts throughout the nation in the nineteen hundreds and...
Whereas Arab American Heritage Month has been proclaimed by several states since and whereas Arab Americans are largely left out of academic discourse and whereas Arab Americans have historically been and continue to be targeted by anti-Arab violence and actions of hate and...
Whereas the US Department of State designated April as Arab American Heritage Month in 2021 and whereas Oregon proclaimed April as Arab American Heritage Month permanently in 2021 and whereas Arab American Heritage Month has yet to be proclaimed at the national level and...
Whereas Arab Americans have contributed to the history and collective future of Corvallis and Benton County, Oregon, and whereas Arab American History Month provides an opportunity to continue the district's growth in learning about the many contributions of Arab Americans.
Whereas the Corvallis School District has made a commitment to equity and anti-racism and as whereas the Corvallis School District has a responsibility to honor and respect the diverse histories of our community and whereas the Corvallis School District believes each and every student must be celebrated and appreciated for the distinct and vibrant contributions made by sharing cultures, language, ideas, beliefs, and values within a school community.
Therefore, let it be resolved by... Oh, sorry. Does... Therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Education of the Corvallis School District does hereby proclaim April 2022 as well as each April annually as Arab American Heritage Month in the district and strongly encourage students, families, staff, and community members to join in existing local celebrations.
And encourage all schools in the district to help highlight this month in great appropriate ways as well as highlight the contribution, contributions of all Arab American peoples to the local community, nation, and beyond, both historically and in current times, adopted by the Board of Directors of the School District, five oh nine J Corvallis of Benton and Lynn Counties, Oregon, at its regular meeting this seventeenth day of March, two thousand twenty-two.
Thanks, y'all, and this is a reminder, we reread those anytime there's a Heritage or History Month to reaffirm our commitment to those statements. And apologies, Sophia, I am used to that last part being read out at once. Yeah, the next item on the agenda is Board Member Reports. Do any board members have a report?
It's in my bag in the car, but I do have a photo of it.
It's Board Member, it's Board Member Reports first. You're good.
Sorry.
That's okay, Harvick.
I apologize.
That's okay. You're doing fine. Yeah, you have time. Did you have one, Chris?
I'm sure this is gonna be talked about again, but I just have to say, I went to the Dino fundraiser that was to help support College Hill. And, I mean, a lot of schools do the Dino thing and it's, you know, a lot of people are there, but what was really exciting, and I'm sorry they're not here to hear this, is that, that both Eileen and Harvick and several staff members were, several staff, several students were there greeting people, giving us the little flyer, but it was, it was like a party, you know, that just everybody was there really positive. And, and I want to say a shout out to Burgerville because they allowed the kids to give everybody that walked in a flyer so that they got a percentage of whatever was sold that day. So it was a nice positive thing, evening.
I had three, three things to share, one from March since I had to miss the last board meeting. Just wanted to thank staff and students for coming together for the Student Youth Truth Workshop back in March. District leadership and staff for bringing together students and student leaders from across multiple schools, I know Eileen was there as well, to really think about how we can deepen the district's learning with and from students about their experience, for students to be thinking about how to engage one another in the youth truth process of learning from, from one another's experiences to really strengthen what's happening at the district policy and program level. So I'm excited for that to continue and I was only able to be there for the kickoff of that workshop, but I'm looking forward to taking the full day off of work in May when students come back together again to really dive even deeper into that work. So wanted to thank everyone for making that possible. My second update comes from Garfield. We were invited to attend an event that happened this weekend, Libros y Desayuno, Books and Breakfast with the Garfield Community. And this was the culminating event following a week-long book fair, which for Garfield Elementary School was the first time they had had a book fair in the last six years since two thousand eighteen. They received a generous grant from Munster &amp; Company and their owners, Jesse and John Munster, that allowed all three hundred and seventy-four students at Garfield to walk away with a free and forever book. And to go and see this event where families and community members, students were represented, staff, thirty-two parent volunteers contributed to making this happen, both across that week of the book fair as well as for Books and Breakfast that happened on Saturday. There were over two hundred community members who came to that Books and Breakfast event. And then several of the parent volunteers gave me a tour of the book fair itself and showed me the ticket that was very much in bookmark shape that every student had received. And students were taken during their, I think it was during their library time and given the chance to go and choose any book that they wanted. And it was entirely their choice. Cost was not an issue because of this very generous grant. And to hear the parents reflect back what that meant, even in watching students go and how excited they were to choose their very own book that they got to select. And even the surprise of students saying, can we get to keep it? We get to take this home. How meaningful that was. So also at the Books and Breakfast event, there were families and community members bringing donated books. So there literally were cafeteria tables covered in books that students had an opportunity to come in and say, oh, I brought that one, that used to be mine. And then also students being able to, to walk out with more books in hand. And in the, the numbers that the Garfield PTA very generously shared back with me, students were bringing home another book or maybe ten or ten-plus books in hand as they left that morning. So that was really joyful. And then I also wanted to mention that there were about, the estimate was eight hundred and eighty-five dollars of community donations to raffle prizes and others that day from Winco, Bodhi Cafe, the Book Bin Bursts, Inkwell, Elmers, as well as private community members that just really highlighted how dedicated the community is and with the Garfield PTA's leadership to celebrating literacy together in our schools. So just wanted to give a shout out to that entire community effort. And then finally, this morning, just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Lovetang and the combined high school choirs from CVC HS, Coral Combiner, had a chance to go and participate in a state choir festival, which is why I happened to be in all, all black today. I think I was invited in as a volunteer piano accompanist and had a chance to go and play with them when they had a moment of, of need for an accompanist. So that was a really joyful way to spend a little time this morning. This phenomenal group of students and their musicality, their musicianship, they sang this range of pieces in across languages reflecting many different cultures. And they were very, very challenging pieces, which was noted by one of the, the adjudicators there afterward of just how challenging the pieces they chose were and how they truly rose to that challenge. So it was just exceptional, a really joyful way to hear music in our schools happening in schools and beyond and appreciated that opportunity. And from my understanding, they are actually performing with the Sheldon Lynn Middle School Choir on Tuesday at six-thirty if anyone would like to hear them. Thank you.
Any other board member reports? Teresa?
Thank you. Well, a couple of things, but also I'm having a memory when you're talking about the Books and Breakfast, that one of the perks of living across the street from the elementary school was that for five years, we baked all the eggs and carried them over in the pans and we didn't do, we haven't done that. And I kind of miss that. And I've never cooked five dozen eggs at a time and it's a lot of work, so. But those breakfasts are really awesome, they're really delightful. Just wanted to first get program and I just want to bring attention to it. And if you don't know about it, it's a, it's a program that allows the district to, through funds raised alongside the foundation, the Corvallis Public Schools Foundation, to provide assistance for barriers that families are facing. And so in the last month, I have worked with families who have received assistance with clothing, have had utilities paid, have had car repairs made. And so every one of those payments is an investment in our kids being able to stay connected to our district. So I'm really grateful to be in a district that has that and I just, I want to thank them for their hard work. And this month more than others, I feel like every time I turn around, I'm hearing, this family relief program helped with this or they took care of that. So a huge thank you to their work. Eighth graders are, they have forecasted for their high school transition and that was really exciting process to see how many electives our, our school district is offering. And so I had lots of conversations with, with eighth graders about whether to do woods or medals or can they really get both? And it's just fun to see them really excited about what's coming next. And they recently had an open house, so many of the kids got to go see the building, but there was something about writing down on paper, this is what I'm gonna do in my transition to high school, that seemed to really kind of make it real. And I saw a lot of excitement among them. So thank you to the staff who, who really helped both create diverse curriculum and then help our eighth graders in a really engaging way to think about what they want their high school experience to be like. And then on that note, also, planning for eighth grade graduation is coming and so there will be lots of opportunities from the community to help support that. And I know fifth grade graduation is coming and kindergarten, all kinds of graduations. Eighth grade graduation is on my mind because I live across the street from Linus Pauling. But, but yeah, it's just a really lively time to be hearing from our students, many of them planning for transitions and just again brings to mind how hard our staff, our teachers and our classified staff and our administrators are working to make sure that our kids are getting a well-rounded education and something that's meaningful to them. So I'm full of a lot of gratitude this month for those things. That's it.
Sammy, did you have any board member report?
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll just do extra minute, our time's almost up. But I did want to say that I was able to volunteer, not only just attend, but volunteered at the Indian Education Ribbon Skirt and Shirt Workshop last night and that was really a lot of fun to see that happen. I wanted to say thank you to the Catherine Jones Harrison Elementary School for hosting the space and also to Marciann and Elena for all the work that went into coordinating that. It was really awesome to see how excited people got to see their projects come together and looking at it like, oh, my gosh, what am I doing into, just eyes bright and excited to see something that they made. And I couldn't go on and on about it. It's just, it was just really beautiful and I will save a lot of it for, I know we're gonna have a presentation about the program here pretty soon for the reapplication process. So I don't want to go too deeply into it, but I did want to say thank you to Marciann and Elena and to the Catherine Jones Harrison School for hosting, look forward to more nights like that. I was, I volunteered as the assistant to the person who came in from the Salats tribe and helped provide instruction. And so that was nice to be able to share some of my skills with the community too in that way, not just as the board liaison. So it was nice to be involved with the projects as well. And that's all I had to, for my report. The next thing on the agenda is the OSBA and NSBA updates. Sammy, did you have anything for NSBA?
I do. My reports, I do apologize for the board that I did not have a letterhead or an overview, a summary, but just content. I will briefly describe the content that is in your packet. There is, I just came back or I just, I just attended the Atlanta Annual Convention for the National School Board Association where we hosted about twenty-five-hundred and five exhibitors, school board members, and education leaders, superintendents in Atlanta. And also held the Delegates Assembly where states representatives from every state and member states and territory participated. participated in affirming the resolutions, the beliefs, and also amendments to the governing model of NSBA. I would like to highlight that there is a multitude of resolutions and beliefs that might be relevant to our community. So I would invite the community to review them and for the board to share any thoughts or inputs about any of them. And basically, those resolutions on beliefs, they provide NSBA membership, which includes school boards, including Corvallis, the priorities that we will be focusing on in the strategy that NSBA has to all, all members of Congress and members of the Senate in the United States. And also, I want to highlight one resolution that was under discussion is protecting undocumented students from removal. And there was a discussion on it. And I did chime in with my personal values, personal stories that I have heard from children who have been impacted by lack of access to education via due to their documented, undocumented status in other countries, and how it is important to uphold the law and the Supreme Court rulings, and uplifted the resolution that we had passed in Corvallis and sanctuary laws that we have in Oregon as a rationale to support the resolution, the resolution passed with the majority. I would like to also highlight another thing on your packet, which is a new grant, Go Green Grant for indoor air quality and the importance of indoor air quality improvements and monitoring energy consumption to reduce costs, both to improve health outcomes for students and prevent illnesses. The Go Green Initiative on NSBA brought millions of dollars in terms of technical support and assistance and funding without any earmarked how you use the fund, a school district, up to $50,000 per school district. And in the pack, you'll see some information about how we can apply for it. So I would like to encourage the school board, as this school superintendent and administration to take it into consideration. One of the points that you get marked on, whether a member of the board attended the overview or preview of the grant, communities who are rural or with predominantly poverty, communities with poverty, and with Native representation. That's being said, all school boards across, or all school districts across the nation are invited to apply. The third element that's in your packet is the slides from the Director of Professional Development, says Oregon School Board Association, who shared, what does it look like to see a school district, a school board being, behaving in a way that's influenced the superintendent's behavior, that's influenced students' outcomes positively. And she measured the standards that you might be very familiar with from the board self-evaluation tool that we have used with OSBA. And she presented some data around what are the elements that provide positive correlation. And I liked it with really strong correlation. The strong correlations were community engagement standard, using data to make decisions standard. And the third standard that had a strong correlation was related to cultural responsiveness. So I would like to invite you to review those slides and really thank you, I thank the school board for its commitment to doing this professional development. It's really contributed to this work that Kristen Miles from OSB was able to share on a national level. Last but not least, I want to really share the general sentiment, school board members and superintendents across the nation are really focused on supporting the kids in those uncertain times. And we are hearing folks really navigating budget cuts and lack of certainty around funding all across the nation. So it's this really unfortunate thing to hear across the country. However, it is reassuring that we are seeing patterns that are not necessarily unique to our community. And I understand we have unique attributes to our community and challenges we need to address. But there are some common challenges that we're seeing across Oregon and the country. And I would love to share those in later times, what we're hearing and what kind of themes we're seeing across the country. That's my report, and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Sammy. Any questions? Okay, and the main thing I would share from OSBA, I know Ryan's probably going to talk about in his report, though, some of the work that OSBA and COSA is doing. So I'll leave that to his report, which is next.
All right, I have a few things to highlight, but the one we're going to start with is that it is golden apple season. And the foundation put together this video to highlight the winners of our golden apples this year.
The winner of this year's golden apple is Bishop Wollinger.
Being seen, being valued as part of the Corvallis community is, it's so meaningful. And I have nothing but amazing things to say about the Pistagap Foundation and this award. It is absolutely amazing. So thank you all so much. Love you guys. This is really great.
We're here to present you with the golden apple. Her sentiments are to do that.
I'm, I'm so honored and humbled. Just the people that have gotten this before are inspirational. So to be in that same caliber is really humbling. So thank you.
Maria Ortiz is a legend in building, teaching Mexican traditional dances to our staff, students, and community. Come on in.
Surprise!
Congratulations. And your family's right over there, too?
Really?
Yeah, see her?
Well, I didn't expect this, but it was a big surprise for me, including my family, because I remember they told me, oh, mom, dress up nice. It's Friday. And I said, no, 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 because I am working with kids. So this is my really great job I do. So to be recognized as one of the best teachers in the schools, I feel really proud about my, you know, my profession, because that's what I love.
Jen Creedah is an amazing human being. Congratulations. I know you're happy.
It's just a special thing to be able to recognize people on their work. And I'm just really fortunate to be one of those people. Because I've really enjoyed working in Corvallis all of these years. There's a reason I commute every day, because it's a really special place, and so is Lincoln. And I'd be proud to be here.
So again, it's a really fun time of year to be able to recognize people who do really important work in our schools, for our students and for our community. We have continued to be able to provide the surprises year over year. We haven't been caught yet. And every time, it's a little dicey, but we've made it through. And we've been able to surprise staff and have their families there to cheer them on. And it's just, yeah, it just feels good to be able to recognize just a few of the people in the district that do amazing work. And we just have incredible staff across our district. So it's always really hard to decide who to recognize, because there's so many people worthy of recognition, including Elaine. Elaine Markley, this year, we also were able to recognize her as a recipient of an award for all the contributions she's made year over year. She was a golden apple winner at one point in time, and now Distinguished Service Award for her commitment to the district and all that she does in our community. With Elaine, I shared this story that the first time I met Elaine, it was at an AYSO parent meeting, and I left as the coach. And there was no way I was going to get out of there without being the coach. And that sums up Elaine and her passion for making sure that kids are taken care of. So again, that's been a highlight this spring. A couple of other things I want to share with you. One is an update around Osborne. I feel like I'm giving you an update monthly at this point in time. But this one is a really positive one. Last week, Senator Gelscher Bluen put in a request to the legislature for, for $5 million as a way to address the needs of Osborne. So Kim Patton was able to work alongside Senator Gelscher Bluen to get that information to be submitted. And so we're waiting to hear back. We probably won't have additional information on that till the end of the session. But that was really positive and an important step moving forward. And then between the city and the district, we've identified Scott Edwards Architecture as the firm that's going to be reviewing the needed fixes for the naditorium. And we'll have that report by the end of June. So we will have a sense by that time, if we have those funds from the state, we'll also have a better sense of what the needs are in terms of repair. And so continue to anticipate more reports coming forward. But tonight, I just want you to know that we're continuing to make progress. It feels like it's slow progress, but it's a significant undertaking. And we're working alongside the city to do what we can to get that back up and running. Also, thank you to the 440 question, people that have sent questions in related to our budget. So we had a budget presentation, and we've sent out that QR code far and wide. So we've had student questions, we've had staff questions, we've had community questions. And appreciation to Lauren. Lauren put together an FAQ that's about 11 or 12 pages at this point in time, answering many of the questions that came forward and theming that out. And you can find that now on our district website. Two other updates for you. One is that last week, we had our students from Nichidae, Japan with us. Again, they come on an annual basis. We had 24 students who came and they, every year, it goes back and forth between CHS and CV. This year, it was primarily at CHS. And students had the opportunity to spend multiple days in classes, learning about the school. This year, we were able to host two of the students at our house, which was a lot of fun to have them. And again, it's just a great opportunity for us to understand different cultures and ways of life, and for our youth to understand that and have those experiences and perspectives is really important. And so we will continue that partnership. In the summer, I anticipate we'll have students that go over to visit their school as well in reciprocity. So that has been really fun, and I really enjoyed it. And then finally, I wanted to give you an update, which Lou alluded to, related to some of the federal changes that continue to come our way, and some of the requests. In this case, it was a directive to comply with Title VI. And that was included pieces around DEI work. And our state responded on behalf of all of our school districts. So individual school districts do not have a responsibility or an obligation to make any just statement at this point in time. I wanted to just read a little bit of what Dr. Williams said in her response. Dr. Charlene Williams wrote, "Oregon has implemented and continues to implement education programs in accordance with the state and federal law. Oregon remains fiercely committed to its values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we celebrate our differences in common humanity. Our moral and ethical obligation is to stand up for public education. We want to assure Oregonians that their children can learn and thrive in safe, welcoming, and supportive environments." So that was just one section of that, that letter that she sent back to DC. And I just think that that's a poignant piece of the letter. And I just wanted to make sure that you had a chance to hear that and to recognize the work that's going on, on the behalf of our students, not just in our district, but at the state level as well. That's my report.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? Okay. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is student representative reports. And we have a couple of y'all here, so I don't know who wants to go first.
I'll go first. A new experience that College Hill has offered our students this year is our experimental design course. This class was taught in collaboration with our science teacher, Kate Barron, and David Hubert from Oregon State University. David is an expert in all things pertaining to flute flies, root, fruit flies. And he brought in some specimens for our students to learn from. David and Kate have worked with our students to develop hypotheses, make predictions, and collect and analyze data. And, excuse me, I'm sorry. So often in our science courses, results are neat, tidy, and predictable. But this isn't the case in real-world situations. Data is often messy and leads us to new conclusions that we're not expecting. That is what our students found. And they were able to do this, they were able to do real primary scientific inquiry alongside real scientists.
Earlier this week, our students went over to OSU and presented their experiments, their predictions, and their findings to a group of Oregon State faculty and students. This type of exhibition is an essential piece of scientific learning and proved extremely valuable for our students. They did an incredible job and were so proud of themselves. It was a gift for them to rub shoulders with the scientific community in our town. Special thanks to the Corvallis Public Schools Foundation for their financial support of this program, to David for providing his expertise, access to graduate-level lab equipment, and his time and relational energy to our students. And as always, thank you to Kate for making opportunities like this happen for kids at College Hill. We hope to make this something that we are able to do year after year for kids at College Hill. And I also want to add, we had a very successful dine-out fundraiser at Burgerville last week. We raised over, just over $500 for our yearbook. And so we want to thank Burgerville for reaching out to us to set that up, and thank all those who supported the event.
Yesterday, we had track senior night, which is, it was pretty early in the season, but I heard it went really well. A lot of seniors PR, which is really great. Yeah, I was just celebrating their hard work for the season. Yesterday, we also had our last assembly of the year, which included a lot of fun games. Like, we have these big blow-up balls we use, and it was really exciting. I don't know. It was, it's new. It's a, it's a great game. It went very well. AP test season is coming up, so a lot of classes are starting to prep for that. Hopefully, it goes well for all the students. And for the end of April, there will be the blood drive, which will be the, it'll be next Friday, I believe. And then there will also be ASB elections coming up at the end of April and early May. And also, Key Club members just went to DECON, which is like the Pacific Northwest District Convention. I think it was in Seattle, and I heard a lot of good reviews from it. There was over 1,000 students from the Pacific Northwest who all went there and just, you know, shared experiences that they had in Key Club. And yeah, I heard our, our team did very well with leadership there. And yeah.
So some thanks to you all for your reports this evening. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have public comment?
Yes.
So we'll now open the public comment period. We value the lived experiences of students, families, staff, and the community, and welcome public comment as an essential part of the district and board's work. The complete guidelines for public comment are available at the registration table outside the boardroom entrance and on the board's website. I will now share some important points. When it is your turn to speak, please come forward, take a seat, and direct your comments to the board. There's a little microphone that, when this is read, it's on. Speakers may provide objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the board will not hear complaints about individual district personnel. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to make your comments. I will alert you when you have 30 seconds left. And when your time is up, there's also a very handy timer that Kim has. You have a green light, yellow is 30 seconds, and then red, your time is up. After your comments, the board will have three minutes to ask clarifying questions, but cannot engage in conversation. If board members wish to revisit a topic or issue raised during public comment, they may they may do so at the appropriate time in the agenda. And that part is really hard sometimes because we like to engage in conversation, but we're not able to do that at this time. So you're always welcome to follow up and communicate with us outside of this meeting. And before starting your comments, please state your name for the record and indicate whether you reside within the school district boundaries.
Amanda Cordes. My pronouns are she/her, and I am both a parent and a resident in the school district. I'd like to begin by saying thank you for providing the budget FAQ. I'm here tonight because there are two questions in particular I'd like to dive more into. The first, why are executive positions and administrators getting raises? Quote, "We believe that all staff are important contributors to student success at Corvallis School District and intend to honor the work accordingly." Historically, non-represented employees receive a cost-of-living adjustment equivalent to that of our classified or certified employees, whichever is lower that year. And second, how does our district level of staffing in the district office compare to other like-sized districts? To which the answer is, the district is currently in the process of gathering this data and will have information to share during the budget process. To read those two in close succession and hear, "We don't even know if our staffing level is appropriate, but regardless, that executive salary raise line item is sacred," was a complete record-scratch moment for me. Even Samaritan, with their budget issues, found it appropriate to temporarily reduce executive pay as seen in the March 22 OPB article. I am here today as we continue on in this difficult budget process to ask the district and the board to reconsider the approach of making certain line items untouchable. Last year, our elementary students shouldered the cuts with a reduction in their access to behavioral skills trainers and librarians. And as an elementary parent, I see firsthand those impacts. Maybe this one cycle, district admin forgoes raises so that students aren't always the ones taking the hit. And as a community, we can share the burden of the undoubtedly crappy, sorry crappy situation that we're in. I'd like to invite everyone to think expansively and put all options on the table to center and best support our students in this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you so much for your time tonight. Thank you. Kim, the timer's already running. Can you reset that?
Okay. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought you made a hand moment.
Giving a thumbs up.
Great, thank you. I am Patricia Von Glot. I'm a parent and a volunteer within the school district. My questions or my inquiries pertain to the reductions across the board. Equitable reductions are needed. We all know the budget realities. But it has to be equitable across all electives. And I'd like to know electives and specialists. How does the district prioritize? How do they pick which elective or which specialty area is more valuable than another? Where is the research data to support the emotional, mental, physical, and social development of one elective versus another? It's very, very important. The difference between, I mean, we offer a lot of electives. The difference between culinary, woodworking, childcare, metalwork, art, music, library, band, choir, athletics. There's a lot to choose from. Where's the data to support the cuts? Second, the, if teachers and specialty personnel can share jobs one day in this school, that school, .3, .6, where's the data for that? And can administrators also share in the reduction of time, placement? To have a principal, assistant principal, dean of students, several athletic directors, assistant directors, behavioral specialists. We all need to share in the cuts, in the reductions, and find a way to make it peaceful. The other area of interest is the literacy program. We have money for this new literacy program. And I'd like to gather more information pertaining to the proven methodology for why we are taking this method over another. Of the level of teacher expertise and the group size that's going to be offered. I spent lots of years in the area of reading. And I just spent the summer, excuse me, not the summer, a couple of weeks in the University of Eastern Oregon, which was not even on my radar. And I did the research. I know the professor who was speaking, and they're doing great work there.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time's up. If you can just hang on a second.
Sure.
Does anybody have questions?
Patty, it sounded like you might have just one final point to make. Is there one final point that you'd like to share with the board?
Although I did not put forth the documentation for harassment and threatening by a staff member at one of the other board members, it should not occur again. We will have difference of opinions. But to have a staff member approach me, coming at me, and promising this is going to be the worst thing I've ever done, this is not tolerable. It's, it's, we are going to have difference of opinion. But you have to be respectful. So that's all I have to say. I'm glad to hear all the good words. There are some very nice programs going on, but please make the cuts equitable. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time tonight and for coming here. Thank you. Is there any more public comment, Kim? Okay. Hearing no further comments, the public comment period is now closed. And we are a little bit ahead as everybody hear from... Or do you want to take a break?
Can we take 10 minutes and reconvene at 7:30?
Yeah, because we're, I'm not sure if, yeah, because we're doing a work session next and I'm not sure if everybody's here. So we're going to take a 10-minute break. Thank you.
Okay, thanks everyone while we took a break and we're at the next item on the agenda for the Corvallis Public School Foundation and Corvallis School District Work Session. So I just want to say welcome everyone and I'm happy to see you all from the foundation here with us. I know we have a slide presentation.
Yeah, and Angela and I are just gonna kind of co- emcee. So Kevin, would you mind starting and we're just gonna go around and do introductions? And it's the button on the right.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Kevin Dogarty. I'm a trustee with the CPSF.
Hi, and I'm Angela Hibbert. I'm the executive director.
I'm Leslie Hammond. I'm a trustee.
And I'm Scott Ellenshausser. I'm a trustee.
And I'm Wanda Arp and I'm a trustee.
I'm Harvick. Sorry. Oh, hi, I'm Harvick. I'm a little confused. I'm sorry.
Chris Hawkins, school board.
Eileen Lewis. I'm a College Hill student representative.
Shawna Tominey, she/her, and co-Vice Chair for the school board.
Lou Hui Whitebear, Lou, and chair of the school board.
And I'm Ryan Oss. I'm the superintendent of the school district. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Therese Jones. I'm a school board member and co-Vice Chair.
Sophia Rebel. And I'm Corvallis High School's ASB President.
Brené Wong. And I'm a school board member.
Hi, welcome. I'm Melissa Harder, the Assistant Superintendent for Corvallis.
And I'm Lauren Wolf. I'm the Director of Finance for the district.
Kim Nelson, Board Secretary.
Do we have all the mics out already? Okay. If Michelle doesn't come, maybe we can give one of them to Scott that we... Yeah, but... Yeah, you're okay? Okay, they don't need it right now, I guess, but yeah.
Leslie says they're good.
If we needed it, yeah. But thank you all.
And then if you could start the slides, that'd be great. Yeah, thanks Josh. And while we're looking for that, we should have Sammy introduce himself because Sammy's online.
Everybody, this is Sammy LaTropo, school board member.
So as we planned for this evening and for our hour together, we wanted to take the opportunity to highlight a little bit of the work that we've been up to. So we're gonna start by talking a little bit about the meeting we co-chaired related to the budget, moving on to highlight some of the things going on in the school district and some of the wins on the side of the foundation, and then an opportunity for some conversation between members of the foundation board, members of the school board, and our students as well. So at that point, we'll do a little bit of a shift in terms of who you're sitting next to in the room. So we have, again, that opportunity to collaborate with one another, which is always one of the highlights and one of the areas that we get the most learning from as we come together twice a year. Angela, anything you'd like to add to that? Oh, okay. All right, let's go to the next slide. So again, thanks to Angela and Nina and the team at CPSF. We held a community meeting on February 27th in order to talk about district budget, as well as some of the drivers that influence and impact the budget in our school district. Again, appreciation for Lauren for leading the conversation on behalf of the school district, to Lou for talking about our advocacy work, and also the conveners. I really feel like Angela continued to come to me and say, "Let's go out, let's figure out how to make this happen." So appreciation for you. But we wanted to open it up, and that's why I asked Lauren to come sit up here and join us as well, just because there were folks from the foundation and folks from the school district who were part of that conversation and involved that night. And so we just wanted to start with the opportunity to share any highlights that people left with. Again, I recognize that not everyone was able to attend. In terms of the school board, we didn't want to have a quorum, so we only had three members present. But again, I think it's worthwhile to share some of the opportunities that came out of that discussion. And so rather than break up for this part into smaller groups, we're just gonna do a broad share out. So if you were able to attend and had highlights that you wanted to make sure both organizations are aware of, this is the opportunity to do that.
Could I just add something real quick to it? I would say also that it is... That meeting, I feel, was a direct product of these joint work sessions that we've had and just building up the dialogue between the two boards and the two organizations. And when we met in the fall and talked about advocacy and getting information to the community and how could we collaborate and work together, I feel like that directly led to this work. So I think, you know, we meet together twice a year and sometimes it feels like, what's the fruit of... It's hard to sometimes see immediately what the fruit is. And I feel like this was definitely fruit from those collaborative work sessions that we've had.
I was able to attend and I was totally impressed because I'm not a real numbers person, but the way how clearly Lauren, the way you explain the budget and every time you would explain something that'd go "but," and then you would answer it before I even was able to formulate a question in my mind. So I would just wanted to really thank you for the effort that you put in to really share how the budget works for the community. Thank you.
I really enjoyed the session as the newest board member. It was great just being able to sit there and just see the community participation. One thing I took away from that is, again, the information that went out to the community and the fact that it seems like everybody walking out of there had gained a better understanding of our budget situation. It's really important to see that outcome and thank you for facilitating.
A big underlying theme and goal that we've talked about over the year has been community engagement. And something that was very inspiring to me about this gathering was when we look around the room, thank you to those of you who are here tonight for the school board meeting, this room was packed. Every seat was taken. The community showed up to have a conversation, to engage, to listen, Lauren, to learn from the very detailed and thorough and very accessible information that you shared. Some of that information's been shared before at school board meetings. And having another format for the community to come together and know that they'd also have a chance to ask questions, to engage in another way, and that they were being invited into that space really intentionally seemed to make a big difference. I heard from community members as they were leaving that they'd like to do more of that, that it really felt like there was opportunity for some back and forth, which we don't have in the same way during school board meetings. So that was something I heard from several community members was, can we do more of this? It's nice to be able to have that back and forth conversation and have our questions answered. And I think in the follow-up engagement, Ryan, as you noted, having 440 questions, having community members come to ask follow-up questions then to those questions, the dialogue that's coming out and the questions being asked, as well as those follow-up conversations, are so important and not something that we always have in the same way with everyday school board meetings or business meetings.
I just wanted to say I thought it was awesome too and glad that we all got to work together on it. And it shows like we're really committed to community, being engaged with the work that we do and also with understanding. That way it's not this big mystery. And Lauren, your presentation was so good and has so much information. I refer people to it a lot because it's so thorough. And as we're getting closer to the budget season, to have that information and to have all the many factors that you put in there was really helpful. I've heard from community members that it was, that have watched it since, so I just wanted to let you know that too.
Lauren or Melissa, you were also there that night. Anything you would like to add or share?
I was, I mean, I've seen the presentation. I love the added presentation with the demographics. I attended with my 27-year-old daughter and we have found a lot of opportunities since then to make connections to things that we're seeing or hearing in the community and refer back to this meeting, you know, for resource. And I think that that just kind of goes to show how incredibly informational it was. So, yeah.
I think my favorite part of the meeting was I've never had an audience of that many people that were interested in budget. So, and I always say I could talk about it all day. I really also appreciated like that opportunity to have the back and forth conversation in a bit more casual of an environment. I think as we enter into, you know, continued budget situations that are a bit unfavorable, I think this is one of those additional tools as far as communication. And we've really been trying to think about other opportunities to engage. And so I think this was, you know, a good step in that direction. And we also, as a... That was the meeting where we kicked off the Budget Input Survey, which was also something that was new this year. And we had, like Ryan said, we had 444 responses on that. And so along with the questions, there was all of the survey input that we gathered. So we're in the process of putting together the report that will show all of the data and that. It's been a bit more work than I expected because we had such a good response rate, which is a good problem to have. But I just think it was a really good platform to kick off those conversations this year. So I really appreciate the foundation's support. And it really was an idea that I think maybe Nina kind of came up with originally. And I appreciate just that collaboration and the fact that we can work together on those things. So, thank you.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to share before we shift gears? Of course.
I'm glad you said why some of us were not at the board, or at that meeting because we all wanted to be there. And I wanted to make that clear that I wanted to be there. Yeah, he told me no. I don't take no well. But I watched the video several times and I think yesterday when I was re-watching it, there were still like 400 and something views on it. And so that tells me one thing, that that's really important. So I just appreciate all the work that you did and that you made it so that we could also view it online over and over again.
Sammy.
I want to just reiterate, everything has been said, agreed to it, and I believe this video should be shared again and again. There are so many valuable information there. And capturing the complexity between the challenges that we have as a community and the challenges that we're navigating as Corvallis School District and how it impacts the kids, how it impacts families, it's really phenomenal work that has been done to make that video or to make that session. So I really enjoyed learning from it and also felt the weight of the responsibility that we have ahead of us. The school board alone cannot solve the problems, the city, the county, the state, the community alone cannot do it. But together, maybe we have a chance. And what I'm hoping for is how can we really capture the wealth of details and complexity in the community meeting and make sure more people know about it, more people understand it, and also more people have the ability to know what they can do about it in their own capacities and roles in the community. I think that's the takeaway that I have. I have shared this multitude in many places and recommended it to folks who are taking leadership Corvallis in lieu of the education day that unfortunately got canceled because of the weather. So again, thank you for everybody who worked to make that happen.
All right, so we're gonna shift gears a little bit and share some of the highlights of things that are, have been happening or have happened within the last year in CSD. Some of the things that I'll share are data points from last spring because we haven't yet got to the time of year where we have new data about student outcomes, but also highlight some of the activities that have been going on around our district. And that will be followed by Angela sharing more information about what the foundation's been up to. Great. So one of the things that I wanted to highlight is that this, over the last summer and into this school year, our staff at our elementary schools have been really focused on additional professional development around the science of reading. About 75% of our staff in our K3 classrooms, our special ed teachers, our language development specialists, and our principals have been participating in that. It's one of the things that you hear a lot about in terms of outcomes across our state, and it's a way that we're continuing to grow in our work. It's through training through Eastern Oregon University that our staff has been participating in and have felt really that it's been successful in increasing their knowledge and skills. Next slide. Last year, successful completion of algebra. We look at that for both 8th graders and 9th graders, and 85% of our students successfully completed Algebra I. A couple of the things that our staff are working on this year is really getting tighter around the scope and sequence because those classes are being taught at both the middle school and high school. And also the assessments, the common assessments, because again, we want to know that a kid who accomplishes algebra in 8th grade has the same skills in preparation in mathematics as students who complete that in 9th grade. So that's work that's been happening around algebra in our district. Another thing that I highlighted earlier in the year, but again, because of the timing of where we're at and students getting ready to take AP exams, last year in our district we had at CV, 450 AP exams were taken. So sometimes that's more than one exam per student. And at CHS, 520 were taken. So students are leaving with college credits and the higher percentage of students scoring threes or above in those classes, in those exams. Just, again, students leaving with additional credits in preparation for the next stage. So those are some academic highlights I wanted to share. Belonging and inclusion, some things that I think are really cool that are happening in our district, again, things I wanted to share. The College Hill Construction Program, if you haven't had a chance to visit and see what they're up to, it's been really incredible. The seniors in that program are building micro shelters, and those micro shelters are then provided to Unity Shelter for folks to have safe and dry places to be. And at this point, they're building two of those, that senior class. So again, a way that we're thinking about belonging and inclusion beyond the walls of our schools. That's one of the things that I think we're proud of as a district. At middle school, we've been able to support mentorship for our black students, specifically at both Linus Pauling and Sheldonland. Coach Eli is one of the folks who's been helping us to be able to do that. You probably heard me share a little bit about that at the foundation breakfast. But again, that's one of the ways that we've been supporting our black students. And then we also are part of the NAACP Regional Black Student Success Grant. And so there are other things that are currently underway. In our district, Kalia Kidder, who's one of the assistant principals at Linus Pauling, has really taken the lead in that. And then a fun one, just to highlight, Letitia Carson's Marathon Club. So if you're, if it's Friday and you need to go on a run, just go to Letitia Carson Elementary School because that's where it's happening. They ran over 1,000 miles this year. They're keeping track of that. One student's ran over 40 miles in one of their... One student's ran over 40 miles and one student's ran over 70. So they're marathoners in the making. And it's one of the ways that they really focus on attendance. Friday can sometimes be a less attended day of school. So to do something special on that day and to build community pride is one way that they've been going about that at Letitia Carson. So social and emotional regulation. You know, when we talk about what happens in our schools, we're talking about all the aspects of who our kids are and the skills that they're building and developing over time. And as our elementary schools adopted Caring Schools Community, which is a program that really embeds what it means to be a member of a community. One day I visited a classroom in the fall and they were talking about what emotions come with things that are new. And for some of us, things that are new bring excitement and anticipation. Sometimes things that are new bring anxiety and fear of the unknown. And so they spent a lot of time talking about the emotions that come with what it means to have something that's new. And they moved into a conversation about having a new student in the classroom who was coming the next week. And how all of those feelings may be true for that student. And as a community, how do they bring that student into the space and respect however they come into this space in terms of feeling that excitement and anticipation or that fear and anxiety around that? And what does that mean? And how does that mean our community welcomes a new student? So taking the development of skills, but also taking those in a way that recognizes how others are showing up and the experiences of our peers and helping to create community around that. It's part of a daily circle where kids come together and talk about aspects of who they are and also practice understanding and listening to one another. So in terms of what we're working on there, I think that's a great example at Mountain View. Post-secondary and real world preparation. On the top right is a picture of the culinary space at Crescent Valley that was redone within the last year. One of the cool things that happened that I shared with the board recently was that when the space was done, the students invited our maintenance team in who had done the work to create the space and served them breakfast as a way of appreciation, which was super cool to see and to think about as, again, as we think about not just being prepared for the real world, but also that piece about community and building that in. Trio Upward Bound is a program that is happening at CHS where students are building skills towards college preparation. We have 55 kids in that program right now. And last summer, they did some visits in Oregon, Washington, and Alaska. And that's in partnership with OSU, Trio Upward Bound. And then this is another thing that is always fun to highlight is that Benton Community Career Convention. Some of you participated in that in terms of being volunteers. So students have the chance to practice their interview skills, hear about different careers in our community. So for that day, we had 279 volunteers in our community come to Sage 2M Hill Alumni Center to work with our students as general volunteers, sharing about their careers and also doing those interviews. So again, we're helping to prepare our students, but we don't do that alone. We do that with our community as a whole. So some of the highlights I wanted to share there. And I think those go on to one more slide. Yeah, a couple of other things. Health, occupation, career day. We had students participate in that with partnership with LBCC, where students learned about all sorts of areas of the medical field. There's our preschool, which is always a way that we start to look for who are going to be our young educators moving into the field, working with our little ones. And then one of the other things to highlight is this year at CHS with our DLI program, we have students in DLI who are going down and volunteering a couple of days a week at Garfield. So again, a way for folks, students to practice their language and language acquisition, but also to be seen as leaders and potentially future educators. So those are just some of the highlights of what's been going on in CSD. And again, the reason why I share that is because when we all come together, we're all in different spaces in the community as community leaders. And for you to be able to share some of those stories is really important and valuable. It makes you way more fun at dinner parties, by the way, if you can share those stories. And also because you now are, you have that video from our budget committee or budget presentation that you could also share. You don't have to watch that during the dinner party, but you could definitely send the email after the fax so people have a chance to better understand what we face as a community, not just in terms of our ability to fund our schools, but also the impact of the changes in our demographics that we're facing. So those are just some of the highlights I wanted to share. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Angela to share some of the highlights from the work happening at CPSF.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. I'm not going to do, we have time. We usually come in the fall and give you our full annual report of all the things that we've done. But I wanted to speak to, we wanted to talk about the wins that we've seen in the district because I feel like a lot of times, especially when the foundation's involved, we're focused on kind of deficits, like where can we try to help plug gaps? And I don't know that we always have the time spent on the great successes that are happening in our schools. I appreciate that Ryan highlighted just a few of those. I mean, I get super excited when I hear about that ninth grade Algebra number and the AP exams and the number of students who are participating. It's really exciting. And we, you know, we play a small part in that. We don't manage curriculum. We don't manage programs. Like that is all happening because of the incredible work of all of the people in the district. But our mission is clear that we're here to provide resources from the community to support the success of all of our students. I mean, that is why we exist. And as you talk through a lot of those wins, I, almost every single one that's mentioned, something pops into my brain about something that we funded, like sensory paths in elementary schools that help with social emotional regulation. And I've seen kids use those. And so I just wanted to kind of bring us back to our kind of three priorities for how we support success in our schools is around educational access, about supporting programs that are removing barriers. And Therese teed up earlier today about the support for the family support program, which is huge. Also, in the last two years, we've invested close to $50,000 in the Bridges Program, which is like changing lives. It's incredible, the work that they're doing there. So, you know, that type of support is really important. And I think we see the result in students' growth. And then learning enrichment, of course, are our Imagine Grants and our Yay Grants, our student-driven grants. And you guys teed up another highlight I wanted to share. I got the chance, I was invited to go to that presentation on Monday at OSU, which was awesome. Your fellow students did a great job presenting real scientific hypothesis testing data, all the things. It was incredible. It was really fun. I was very glad that I was invited to attend. So that's an example of, I think, a lot of times those grants that we fund can be small in amount and can often be overlooked. But they contribute to really the sense of real-world learning, of ownership over student success, of just belonging. And then our final priority is about academic support in terms of like very specific interventions to help keep students on track. And that's primarily, you know, our support for summer programs, math camps for those students who are transitioning, high school credit recovery. So those remain our three kind of priority areas to help, you know, underpin student success. And I just had, I think, a couple of photos to show of just some highlights. From the upper left is the Ecology Class from last summer. The Career Convention, you can see, which is another program that we sponsored this year. And I think another example of the collaboration between the two organizations and really just trying to outreach to the community and get participation in that. And the Community Budget Forum down in the corner. And I think, if you advance one more time, Kim. For me, I think for us, these contribute, like I mentioned, to that sense of belonging. Often, these programs that we're asked to support are the things that are vulnerable at times when the budget is constrained, but really create a sense of connection for students, create an environment where they feel like they can, they belong and can be successful and become even more important and provide opportunities for real-world learning. And I think increasingly seeing our role in some of this work in building those community connections, communities within the schools in terms of funding programs that help create the community at school, but also connecting our community to our schools. And that can look a lot of different ways, like the Budget Forum, like support for the Career Convention, but also I think in less tangible ways, especially as we face, you know, just the reality of less funding. So just one anecdotal example, this fall, when we reviewed all of our Imagine Grant applications, you know, sadly, there were at least half that we couldn't fund. But we've put a fair amount of time into trying to find other people in the community who could directly support them. So like connecting Samaritan with the health class who had a grant application that we weren't able to fund, but Samaritan, bringing them together to try to see if there's a way that they could provide some support. And I think that that's potentially one way that we can kind of continue to add value and bring in resource from the community. So that's kind of our summary.
Here we go. You, I'll start from the, start from the top. So we have a little bit of time to have some discussion in smaller groups. Oftentimes, I sort of orchestrate where everybody sits and goes. I'm not going to do that tonight. I'd like you to try to find folks from, if you are with CPSF, folks from the board or staff or students. And so that you have multiple viewpoints. And we have three questions for you to spend some time talking about. What have you heard tonight? And how will you share it with the community about the value of the things that happen in our schools? What's the role of the foundation and school board in this, in this work? Excuse me. That's why I didn't turn my mic on. And are there other opportunities for the foundation to further contribute to these wins? So we're going to spend about 10 minutes in that conversation and then we'll have another 10 minutes or so for share out. So, yep, do you want to go share that, the eight o'clock piece?
And also, it's 8:03. So student representatives, if you have homework to do, you are welcome to take off if you need to. And if you want to stay, you're welcome to stay. I just want to make sure you knew about that part for a time check.
And CPSF, you don't have homework? So you're sticking around. All right, ready, go. Self-selecting this time, mixed up. I'm going to leave this, Josh, I'm going to leave this one on.
If there's anybody in the community listening, it's probably going to be hard to hear. Just a heads up.
But I do think that having some concrete examples to be a point of view and real numbers to be able to tell students members, this is what it is. You know, this is because that's an output. It's a outcome, but it's an output that they can say, oh, we understand what $50,000. Right, or we get what, 85%? That means something. Even if they don't totally, think about that, that approach.
Deeper connections.
Welcome the way, and at least recognize.
Kind of stay away, but it's overwhelming. Recognize how many of you are. It's really important that it provides another competition for folks to be able to appreciate.
And it's the.
What is the role of the foundation in this year? And it's for outside. And it's mutual support.
Yeah, we can't count absolutely. I, we just, we just collaborated with the foundation to get a parent name that was not that more possible. No single community partner is going to be able to tackle that process. It took five agencies and a pandemic who was willing to give us a comprehensive estimate without charging us, not for the diagnostics, so that we're not really dragged on for big enough. And that's the level. And the foundation is one of those of that. And the foundation's one of those of that. But it's a first, a community that these families, they really have access to. And it was literally like, we weren't going to sign by $30,000. And also, and we literally couldn't, there was no more agencies to get money, right? And so how many times is it not going in? Like the ability to get to the next thing requires small things, really. The grand scheme of things is not that big. But it's manageable. It's not a source of experience. It's not a strong, it's a very difficult one. That family, that parish is starting a CBL training program that is paid for by a different grant that could stick for a while to get her there, but could be for like the tuition. And I think what, I think what a lot of community members don't understand about the budget role of institutions like the district or a foundation is that we have buckets and they can't tell each other. So it's not like I just go, oh, that's how it's like now. Yeah, but that was a different kind of money. You don't understand, the bucket that can do this thing is active. And these buckets, it doesn't matter how much money you're getting, that's this. So then they, you know, how many people think about that?
So like, speaking about your experience.
That's a great question.
I think as far as like that, I mean, I don't know if I wish to, I got pretty, I never, I love my husband's spirit. As far as like, I really, I want to change. I've been like, or being the one, I would never say, well, that's not a bad thing. I've heard that we have, but I, I am aware. I think it's changed a lot to that. It was really like, it focused a lot on like, it's like, but, and I, I just feel like, it's, it's not really what their parents can do. I, I, I just, I've noticed that like, portion now, they're, and all the stuff to make glory after my house. And even though you don't have to do math, um, you know, sometimes we have these waves. How do you manage it? How do you manage it? I think it's, and I need to change, it's like, it's like, I want to support all those things. And I think it's also, maybe to get to a consistent thing, which is like, if you were on the, or if it'd be consistent, that we're all going to, every person must do it. And I think it's also, maybe to get to a consistent thing, which is like, if you were on the, or if it'd be consistent, that we're all going to, every person must do it. I mean, I'm proud of the sound of this, and I'm not, I said, I'm proud of it, right? So I, I didn't come back to that student safety. There's a huge gap. And I will forever write my check out and say it's worth doing this program. Because that is not a sexy program. It should be, but it's not. And so how do the journalism writers, I feel like, I don't know. I feel like I was my slash was out of breath. And now she hates me, watching that. I don't know. Well, I'm thinking about, you know, what kind of incentivizing for her, I don't know, like that is a hard, buddy program. Like, yeah, you put the foundations, which helps with something, yeah. But could we have some kind of like identity for kids, for kids to be elected? They're coming in and running classes. I think, yeah. And then, we are like, we're, we're, I think it's really, I don't know how I wish, which is like, you're, it's like a picture. A lot of kids, a lot of others who, you know, forgot. I think I don't care a lot about that. I feel a lot of people are in those, who are not really involved, like, I know they're right, they're not, they're not, they're not. I think I don't, I think, 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 I think. That, that, that's really hard. To stay, I mean, yeah. I'm not a pastor, I don't know. I don't, I'm not pregnant. I mean, I have many couples, but, yeah. But, yeah. I mean, yeah, that's really separate. I know they used to plan our staff dance. I think they've watched that. I know it's there. And I know that they're more. Like they try to collaborate this, this relationship, but it didn't really work out. I just, I think, I think. So I guess we've got something that, like, I think we have, we actually have. Right. Well, so, you know, I'm, I'm turned this poverty issue, this Gaza. I guess our, also, if you're saying this, like, we're all, we're all, there you go. There you go.
We talked about is we, we had a, um, a really strong partnership between, uh, uh, the board and, uh, the foundation. And I think, um, one of the, the things we talked about is how we can complement each other, um, in our different roles. We are elected officials and we set the direction and, uh, the foundation appreciates that and, and, uh, do their things to help us out. We can't be all things to everyone, but with the partnership, um, I, I, I used a military term, you know? The foundation is a force multiplier and, uh, so, so, um, we really do appreciate all the opportunities and how we can complement each other. I think, uh, communication is going to be the key in, in us working together.
Yeah, I really like that point that it's a force multiplier.
I talk a lot in the meeting, so I think somebody else from my group should talk.
Hi, everybody. Um, we had a great conversation and, um, I think we, when we landed on, I don't know, I'm just gonna talk about what I talked about then. When we landed on number three, I was listening to what everyone had to say and we talked about how the get together for community engagement for budget was a really positive experience. And one of our group members said, wouldn't it be great to do that, but not in a crisis moment? Like, how can we do it in a way that's, you know, different? Um, then we had some other conversations around the power of alumni, um, the graduates from our high schools and what they have to offer. Um, especially because they're out there in the community, many of them, you know, close by. Um, so we talked about what could, what could we do to create an opportunity for our alumni to come back and be part of a conversation engagement opportunity about how they can give back to the schools where they attended. And not just with money, but that would be good too. Um, yeah.
I nominate Chris from our group. I already asked her and she said no.
I'm getting married on Saturday. Doesn't that make a difference? Like I, you know, my mind's a little... Thank you. That would be a great gift. Thanks.
To be clear though, I didn't tell Angela to tell you to do it. I told Angela to do it. I told her it was a board meeting and the board members always talk and so the foundation should do it, but that's okay. Well, we had a good conversation. Every time I think about them when we do these summaries, I'm like, I don't know if we answered the questions. I never know if we answered the questions. A couple of things that came out of our group, we talked about a similarity between the board, um, the school board and the foundation as people who can bring a counter narrative to the community. So, you know, especially, uh, at budget season, um, and especially now in the last couple of budget seasons that we've had. Uh, there are a lot of challenging narratives and sometimes narratives around failures. Uh, and we are close to work that gives us a lot of exposure to wins also. And so one of the things that we can do is make sure that those don't get lost, even as we have to deal with hard things, that we're bringing that attention back to the, the hard measurable things that people can land on. Like people know what $50,000 is. And so when we say we've invested this, that means something. Um, or 85% is a number. People can wrap their head around what that could mean and translate to as a, you know, an investment toward a, a good outcome. And so we have some responsibility and some opportunity because we are not district staff. Um, we are elected officials, we are volunteers, and so we are stepping into this different kind of role. So that was one thing that we kind of landed on around what we could do. The other thing we ended talking about, um, no surprise, cause it was Chris and I were in a group together, we talked about poverty. And we talked about the importance, um, the, the important role the foundation plays in, um, in elevating the opportunity for kids, um, who they don't have, um, maybe, there's not another resource left, right? They've, they've tapped their resources and, and then here's the foundation. It can be another bucket. It can be another resource. It could be another pool. It also can be, how, how big is your board? Like 14 people or something? It's huge, right? 14? Okay. Um, it's 14 more people in our community that are committed to having eyes on a vulnerable part of our population in our community and can welcome them in and treat them as our, as our community, that they belong here and help create space where they have a place to land. And so there is something really powerful about that. And how do we, uh, how do we increase that? How do we increase, um, the resources? How do we increase the, um, the reach that that can have? Um, how do we braid a little bit better the resources to get, uh, a little bit further for each person? So that was a little bit, we didn't have any answers. We just had really great questions, I think, but it was good. Thanks.
I think I've been nominated by my group and will also invite folks, if anyone has a specific example that you'd like to share, maybe through my share, please feel free to. So thank you, Wanda, Harvick and Eileen. We talked a little bit about the, the value of having resources such as the recording of the most recent commu-, or really this first launch of the community engagement session on budget. And also look forward to as our group watches that and comes back and, and talks about and reflects on it together. And we talked about the importance of, especially while navigating challenging times. How many amazing examples that we heard tonight across the entire board meeting of wonderful things to celebrate in our district? And we know that what we want to do ultimately is preserve and expand all of these incredible things that are happening. But how do we continue to really take the time to know about them, to understand them, to share them with others? The point came up in our group of how challenging communication of all of those things can be. That they exist across so many different spaces that for our student representatives, for example, they have the pleasure to hear about all, so many things at the school board meeting. What about other students and other families or other folks getting the same information? And Harvick, you, um, pointed out really importantly that this information exists across social media, across newsletters, across websites. And it's hard to find one consolidated place to really understand what's going on. And even through lots of different means of information being shared out, we are all hit with these information overloads that it can also, even if you see it right in front of you, you may not recognize that it's even there. So we talked about that as a challenge as well as an opportunity. And then also we're able to hear from Wanda about some of the excitement of the foundation's work in really working closely with the district to meet goals set collaboratively by the community, by the district, by, by the foundation, um, in bringing in support from donors and grants, as well as being able to follow the needs and gaps identified by students and staff through those grants as well. Anything else for my group to add? Did I miss anything?
All right. I think we've heard from all the groups, but I also, we have a couple of minutes left. So if there's anything else that you, um, wanted to, um, further discuss that you heard as a point or things that you, um, wish would have been shared, um, we have just another minute or two to do that before we, um, before we close this part of the, part of the meeting.
I'll share an example, um, recently, and I haven't shared this with you yet, Ryan. Um, but we, I was recently in a, a, a meeting with OSBA, which is the Oregon Association of School Business Officials. And there was just a lot of, um, you know, conflicting feelings about what's going on with our funding. And we were specifically talking about summer school. And, um, I realized in that moment, the fact that we're not worried about summer school and that we will be able to have those programs and we're honestly, I mean, we're, we're planning, we're thinking about it from a, um, you know, the programmatic perspective, but from the, the, the dollar amount, uh, we, we aren't worrying about that. Um, and I shared that with that group and I said, they said, well, how are, how are you paying for it? And I told them, well, we have a really strong foundation in Corvallis. Um, and it really wasn't a question that they were, that they wanted to support that. They're, they're all about it. And, um, I think that was something that would be very easy to take for granted, but it's something that we have and we're very fortunate to have. Um, and I think that's a great example of the, the collaboration that's happening. Um, and I, they specifically asked me the dollar, the dollar amount that was attached to that and they were blown away. Um, that we have a, a community foundation that is, is willing to support us at that level. Um, and so I think that's just important to know. Um, I think we're setting a good example across the state of how we work together and, and how we do that. Um, and I think that's just such a huge, huge win for this community to, to be able to serve kids during that time.
Sammy, I also want to make sure that you have a chance to share. If there's anything else you would want to highlight or bring to our attention.
Thank you. The wisdom in the room is, uh, uh, more than enough. I would not add anything to it.
Um, I just wanted to say before we close out that I really hope we do have those community conversations more with the foundation. I think that was, um, amazing and, um, in a good way to highlight the work happening and say like, how can we continue to grow this as a community? Like that, um, is this a direction that we should be going as a community with all the things going on? Cause it's, um, seen such a awesome, positive impact on the students because of the relationship with the foundation. I shared in our group too that OSBA uses the summer program for a positive example, as you all know. And so there's so many other examples like that, that a lot of people just aren't aware of. So even like community sessions focused on, um, on the positive pieces too. That way it's not just the, um, the one time only. So I would hope that we continue to have those.
All right. Well, thank you so much for being here this evening and for your continued steadfast support for our school district and for our kids. Thanks again. I appreciate it.
And we'll just take a really short break to like transition folk, um, and also the student reps need to, you can still stay obviously, but can we take a break? Okay. Um, we're back from our break and the next item on the agenda is consolidated action. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for action. Does anyone have a question about anything in consolidated action?
I do.
Which, what one is it, Sammy?
Uh, calendar. The, the school board calendar.
What? Oh, calendar.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. My, my audio might be not really clear.
It sounded like you said candidate. That's why we were like, huh? And it says, um, it says meeting schedule on here too. So it's just a different word, but same thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Sammy, what do you got for that one?
So, um, I'm sorry, let me put the headsets. Probably my audio will be better. Um, can you hear me okay right now?
Yeah.
Wonderful. So I, I just wanna ask the question and I'm not sure about the answer. So I'm just gonna post that question on October 9th. My understanding it falls in the week of, uh, Sukkot, which is a Jewish holiday. Uh, one of the major holidays between the 6th and 13th. Uh, my very, uh, brief understanding is, uh, the first day, uh, the folks, uh, usually observing, observing the holiday, uh, don't go to work and the following days leave work early. So I'm wondering if, uh, if we have consulted, uh, folks about that specific date. Uh, if they would like to attend the meeting, it might be a conflict. So I just wanna highlight that one specifically.
The, the August 13th retreat? October 9th? I'm so sorry.
I apologize. October 9th.
Uh, that was my bad. I thought you said August, not October. Okay. That's what I was like. Okay.
Sammy, um, I, when I was looking at this this year, I was looking at two other districts who observe. And I thought that I, um, double checked specific days, but I will triple check that one.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
So we're taking that one out then?
Yeah.
Okay. For another read? Okay.
And I, if I may, I do not have any objections of that. Uh, we approve it and if we received, uh, receive input from staff or from the community, we may revise it.
Okay. Do you all wanna do that? Consider adopting it and then revise, or do you wanna Kim to pull it?
I don't see a time urgency, so why don't we pull it and, and consider it later?
Okay.
It, it, it's clearly gonna fall during the week. And so, um, I guess we should, I think we should just pull it because we probably are looking at a change then. Yeah.
Okay. So the, um, we have the other items, non-resident transfer spot stops? Spots, yes. Um, the minutes and licensed personnel action left under consolidated action. Uh, would, does anyone wish to make a motion?
I do.
Okay.
Chair, I move, uh, to approve consolidated action as presented.
No, cause we're pulling something.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I...
Would you like to rescind your motion?
Yes, I do.
Did you wanna restate it?
I, I moved to approve consolidated action with exception of, uh, board meeting schedule.
Second.
It's been moved by Sammy and seconded by Therese. Is there any further, um, discussion? Okay. It has been moved by Sammy and seconded to Therese, or by Therese to adopt consolidated action with the exception of, um, the 25, 26, um, board meeting schedule. And Chris?
Right.
Shawna?
Aye.
Therese?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consolidated information. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for discussion. Would anyone like to discuss an item in consolidated information?
I have one.
Which one?
Um, actually, the policy, uh, 2A, AR1, 2 and 3. Uh, yeah, just, it, it's a com-
The ARs?
No, I, I just have a, uh, a comment.
Yeah, but is it all three of those ARs?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Any others?
I need to, um, there's a typo in, uh, 2A, AR4, so that needs to be corrected before we finish.
Any others? Sammy, you have any you want pulled?
I do not.
Okay, Bernie?
Yes, I, I, I'd like to, um, for those reconsideration series, I'd like, uh, to see if we can think of an online way of filling out the, the, the forms. It seems like under the policies right now that we, you're gonna have to request that form from somebody. And, and I think, uh, maybe we should visit, uh, making it more accessible by, by, uh, having an online process.
Can easily make that happen.
Okay. And was that for all three of them? Is that?
Yeah, the reconsiderations are 2, 3 and 4.
Oh, 2, 3 and 4, sorry.
With the reminder that people always need to start with their principal in the building. Thanks.
Is that the provision you needed to make?
No.
Oh, it was like, wow.
Yeah, that was quick. No, um, if, if we can look at, um, AR4, there was a copy and paste error. So in AR4, number one, A, it should say, "Any concern made regarding school or classroom library materials." It accidentally said supplemental instructional materials.
Okay. Alrighty. So the rest of them look good then?
I, I did have a question on one.
Which one?
2A dash AR1.
Okay.
And my question is just about one word. So under core instructional materials, it starts with the board selects core instructional materials. And I was wondering if select is the appropriate word to use there.
That's a good point, cause we adopted, right?
We adopted. Select to me brought up the, the connotation that we would actually be the ones choosing, um, the curriculum. Not that that isn't part of adoption, but that really that selection is coming from another place before it comes to us for adoption.
So instead of selects, we could use adopt or approves. Um, but you're right. You don't go through the selection process. We bring to you after a full-on process from the, um, growth and experience team. Okay.
So that was my one recommendation. Was just checking that word.
Good, good catch.
Just a quick question too on, on, on these policies. Uh, are there any deviation from the OSBA, uh, language or, or is it, uh, all pretty much the same?
Um, there's some deviation. So, um, I think you all received an email from Erica Chaney, who's responsible for our work at CIMC. And, um, their participation, the library media staff was like integral in all of this. And one of the things that was very important to them, because right now they are, um, we don't have a certified librarian in our district. So some of the deviation in language had to do with accounting for that. So you'll see in some of the places where it says it should be a district librarian doing blank. And then a footnote, if there isn't one, then we'll select district library staff. Then they were also very, um, it was very important for them and critical for them to, um, feel safe in their position in the work that is requested of, required of them in here. So there are some things that we adjusted a little bit to make sure that, um, selection of materials, especially classroom and library materials, that it was the principal is responsible and using the library staff to do that selection so that they can feel safer in their role, which I a hundred percent understand, given times and the fact that these are library materials. So there was some deviation, not a lot, but enough to make them feel comfortable with what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, go ahead.
Just wanted to comment on the engagement with staff. And I know we heard from at least one staff member over email, just stressing how important that engagement was. So just wanted to thank you and everyone who was involved in really making sure that staff experience, um, was reflected in these policies.
Thank you. I, I'd like to say the same thank you. This is a lot of material to go through. Um, I met with library staff online. We did an online meeting, excuse me. And then I gave them opportunities to go through the materials. They, uh, just, if you can imagine a Google Doc with just tons of comments and suggestions, going through revising, revising again, um, and then obviously inviting them to come tonight. A lot couldn't, but just so that they knew that they were an important part of the process. So they were, and I appreciate all of that work.
I just wanted to, I guess, kind of, uh, expand a little bit on that the language changes, um, definitely are about helping, making sure that they feel comfortable. And I think it's also about accurately reflecting what really happens in our district, right? So we want our policies to reflect the real work and in our district, we don't have a district librarian. And so my, beyond just simply, we want to make sure that they feel safe in their work. It's also, we want to make sure that our policies reflect how we've chosen to staff this really important work. And we've chosen to staff it with highly qualified people that don't bear an MLIS degree, but are doing, um, that heavy lifting for our district. And so anyway, that's it.
Okay. Um, I think we're good. And the next item on the agenda is board member comments. Is there any board members that would like to make a comment? Go ahead, Therese and Shawna.
Um, so, uh, the board, um, has, uh, a lot of opportunities to be involved in community engagement in various ways. And, uh, one, um, opportunity that is in front of us is that the Boys and Girls Club of Corvallis has reached out um, and, uh, asked about the capacity of the board to have a designated liaison. And in the days prior to COVID, um, board liaisons were a pretty common thing. And then for lots of reasons, we haven't exactly organized ourselves officially in that same way. Um, I have the fortune of working with people that are on that board and so the email came to me. Um, but I don't think the invitation came to me. Um, I think I was the recipient of the email. So I wanted to bring that to you all and ask, um, if there are folks who, um, have an interest in that and would, would really be passionate about stepping into that role. Um, it's, I think it would be, it's wonderful that they wanna involve us. Um, it's not a, um, you know, they're not asking, uh, our liaison to take a formal role, but just to be a, you know, that point of contact. Anyway, I didn't want to keep that opportunity just to myself and so I'm sharing with you all. And if you, that is something that you would like to do, we can have more conversation about that. Um, we don't really have like a formal process for like, how do we do that? So I guess it could just be if you put your hand up first or it could be, um, you know, let's find out if there's more than one person interested. But either way, um, I wanted to share that with you all and see if there is one or more who feels really excited about that opportunity.
I think the more we can stay connected with the community, the better. So that's my thoughts. I guess, is there anybody interested? Or what do you have, Ryan?
Should, um, folks, um, let Kim know if they're interested and then bring it to board leadership? Does that?
That sounds great. Thank you.
Okay.
That's what we do with the other ones. Yeah.
No, I appreciate you offering a process because I had information and no idea about what we should do with it. So that sounds good.
There we go.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead.
All right. So as a family member in the school district, I had the pleasure of seeing the invitation to take the family survey for the Youth Truth Family Survey come through my email. So I just wanted to bring that up. I know that this is one of the ways that we're really looking to hear from families, to engage with families more deeply. So I know that the email came through asking for folks to complete it by April 25th. I have not done that myself yet, but just wanted to also mention and elevate it for others who are family members in the community of students in the district and just to make sure that we were looking at different ways to get the word out.
Thanks Shawna. I need to do mine too.
I have done mine and it's not that taxing. You can do it in 10, 15 minutes.
Thank you, Bernie. Any other board member comments? Yeah, I have a, but you can go. Uh, no, you can go.
Um, earlier when I was giving my superintendent... Earlier, when I was giving my superintendent's report, one of the important dates that I did not share with you, because I was reading from my paper, not from my screen, is that the CSD Art Party is being held again this year, April 24th, from 5:00 to 6:30 at Corvallis High School. So, if you're able to attend, it's a great opportunity to see the work of our students. And it is a, just an enjoyable time to be, be together. It's the April 24th, 5:00 to 6:30 at CHS.
Thanks, Ryan. Sammy, Chris, Bernie, you have anything? Okay, I was just going to ask, we had some communication, if we can pull the bullying policy for review? I know it's been a little bit, that's a good one to keep reviewing and working on.
Absolutely, I'll bring it to Mark to me, for sure.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, with no other business, the meeting is adjourned at 8:52 PM. Have a good night, y'all.